Should we get started?
Yes.
Fantastic. Yeah, we're gonna. All right, how we doing up there? Ready to go? All right, fantastic.
I'm sure our GoPro.
Three sixty. All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Goshen Central School District being held on Monday, August fifth, twenty twenty four, in the District Administration Building, being recorded and posted to you after the meeting. All right. Everyone be joining in place.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the government for its stance, domination, and without invisible liberty and justice for all.
Do we have anyone signed up for privilege of the floor this evening?
Having none.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on then. Not too much to report on tonight on the President's Report. We are moving forward with policy. It's an ongoing effort, so that is continuing. We also have our board goals that we'll be reviewing a little bit later today to keep that moving as well. And lastly, we had a few oaths of office taken outside of July first, twenty twenty four Annual Reorganization Meeting. We had Maureen Farrell, our district clerk, Dr. Curtis Coats, our superintendent, Amanda Barone, our treasurer, Tracy Rader, our deputy treasurer, Michelle Serna, acting district clerk, Shannon Johnson, our board member, and Genevieve Muller, claims auditor. All of the air oaths of office, if you can pronounce your name properly. All right, and that's all I have tonight on the President's Report. Moving on to our legislative update, Mr. John Sullivan.
No current update of the progress of actually meeting this resume next month. Thank you.
Fantastic. Very good. All right, outside of policy ongoing, are there any other board member committee reports? All right, then right on to our next agenda item, our superintendent's report, Dr. Curtis Coats.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus. Two non-agenda items that I'd just like to bring to the Board's attention. On our agenda for this evening is the appointment of our new tax collector, someone not new to the district. Our former treasurer has agreed to return as our school tax collector for this year is Anne DeSiglioli. So Anne, welcome back to Goshen again.
Yeah, thank you.
We are glad to have you. And then just a quick update for the Board of Education, the committee regarding the ongoing cyber issues that we have been experiencing. The good news is we are about ninety-six percent of the way through recovery. We are starting to see some of our network restoration actually happening as recent as this afternoon. We fully expect by tomorrow our phone systems will be completely restored back to here to district. Some of the network is being opened up for incoming traffic, starting this afternoon, and will continue to filter back our district offices that have been relocated out to Bosse's, and we hope by Monday of next week to have full restoration back to district. So a very significant thank you to Orange Ulster Bosse's, who has been an invaluable resource through this entire process for us to at least have district operations continue, to Arctic Wolf, our disaster recovery team that has walked us every step of the way through this process, and to all those who have been patient while we found our way through something that hopefully we'll never have to go through again. And our team has already started to look at additional safety precautions that we can put on the network protocols and end-user protocols to try to mitigate anything like this from happening, as I said again. Moving on to the agenda items that I have on the report tonight. So as per Commissioner's Regulations, we did post our district-wide safety plan. The district-wide safety plan under Commissioner's Regulations has to have a thirty-day comment period. It's been posted on the district website after our safety committee meeting happened on the seventeenth at six thirty. We'll go over this again before the next meeting for the brief hearing that we'll do, but just some of the changes, the modifications in the plan for this year. Under the emergency response protocol, simply because of what we're going through, we did add response for cyber attacks. Under prevention and intervention strategies, we did add that the district employs both school resource officers and private security. We did add school psychologists to the response team. And then some of the prevention programs, because they're being implemented in our buildings, we did choose love, NABIT, and CARES as prevention programs. We have discontinued the use of Rachel's Challenge and the Friends of Rachel's Club, so we did remove that from the plan. And then on recovery, again, we did add psychologists as response support. And then we did add debriefing and support for any team that is deployed to an incident as well. If you go on our district website, all of those changes are highlighted in blue. The district plan by Commissioner's Regulation is due to be adopted by September one, so doing that at our next board meeting keeps us compliant. And then the confidential building plans get submitted directly to the state. Those are not public facing documents, but we have started the process to do any review of those as well to make sure that they can be submitted as of October first, when they are due. Also, on the agenda for the Board to approve tonight is a Glen Arden pilot agreement. So as the Board had approved this last year, we had been waiting for the potential sale of Glen Arden to go through to a new corporation called the Knowles of Goshen. It did not go through. They have now returned to us, asking us to update our agreement. The only substantive change that has happened, you'll see that the last year's pilot agreement has now been added to the agreement. And as for the agreement that was approved by the Board last year and by all of the taxing municipalities and jurisdictions within, most have approved that any of their late fees or penalties be waived. So what the district would be due under this agreement, because they have not made payments since twenty twenty one, is essentially nine hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars in principal payments. What we would not receive is three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars in interest and penalties. The village, again, is not getting any of their penalties. The town is not getting any of their penalties. The county has a modified amount in there, and they would receive a small amount of theirs. But again, the only substantive change versus what the Board approved in September versus where we are now is an additional year of payment that's coming due with the new taxing year. The next item, we've been working throughout the end of the school year and the summer on improvements to transportation with our transportation consultant. I was just gonna ask Ms. Lamren for some assistance, just talk about some of the work that we have done to date and what we are looking for in terms of potential improvements for the new school year. So I'll ask you to help fill in with that.
Thank you. Good evening. So we formed a committee, and this committee is made up of parents, staff members, and the administrative team. And some of the staff members are teachers working in dual roles as parents as well, which is helpful. We've had two meetings to date, and our last meeting is tomorrow at three thirty, and we'll discuss the potential changes. Some of the pros that we've found of making these potential changes are less idle time for students. That was our goal initially, because we want to make sure students aren't sitting on the buses any longer than they have to while they're waiting to get into the buildings. Less buses on the road and at the buildings, that would cut down on traffic, not only in the buildings but also on the roads. I know everybody's in a hurry to get to work, and you see all these buses around. If we were able to cut those back, it would be an improvement. And that also leads to more availability of drivers. So we have a consultant that looked at these runs, and he said we're unique because we have a central area where our buses go out into a circle, which is very good. We're not as rural as some districts are that they go much further. And he's trying, initially, he was trying to have a bus run at each building rather than doubling up like they do right now, which is middle school, high school, GIS and Scothtown are doubled up. So we would have buses going back and forth four times. That was too much to take on, and we want to do this in phases, starting with the elementary level first, because that would have the greatest impact for those students. So we're gonna talk about this tomorrow with the group and see if it is something that they feel could be rolled out successfully, because we don't want to do something that's gonna put us backwards either. Make sure we keep families in mind. Students ultimately are the goal, because that's why we're here, for the benefit of the students. So we will have more on that after tomorrow. So they did do some runs as a, not a dry run yet, they want to do dry runs this week, but they do have these runs created in the system to see if this actually was a possibility. And in some cases, the ride time goes down, and that is a plus. The con is, some cons are, I'm sorry, possibly earlier pickups and later drop-offs, but they don't range large enough in time to not go forward. We would go forward if it was too much of a burden. And the other con that I could see possibly as a parent would be if I have a GIS child and an SAS child, they won't be riding together, they would be on separate buses. So, but then again, it could be a positive thing if it ends. Miss anything?
No, I don't think so. I think you hit largely on the points that we've been discussing, but again, it's gonna be important for us tomorrow to get the potential changes out to the committee and get the feedback to make sure that what we're looking to move forward is going to improve the service that we're looking to target to hopefully get more of our students back on buses again, fewer cars on the road, and fewer cars in the parking lot at the same time. So the last piece, and I shared a copy of this in the Board's packet for tonight, tried to be proactive with what the Board had shared during our last meeting, with getting a draft version of goals and objectives going for the new school year. And I used a new format this year just to try to target exactly what was being discussed. I tried to put it into the beginnings of a spreadsheet that might be useful. I tried to pick up the areas that the Board had brought up. I don't know if I missed anything, but this is intended just to be a first draft. I am happy to share this out to the Board, where it can be worked on collaboratively, to take feedback down, just make the changes for the new meeting, but I just wanted to make sure that I got this out to you, so we could keep positive progress moving. Beyond that, all right, that is the end of my report for this evening.
All right, thank you, Dr. Coats. And let me get through some of the resolutions here. If you'd like to discuss this a little bit further, during the comments section, we can dive back into that and get a little more in, but thank you for putting them together. All right, on to our next item, our Assistant Superintendent for Business Report, Ms. Maureen Van Lamren.
Thank you. Good evening again. Our external audit is taking place this week. The auditors are here working, and we are running back and forth between the two offices and trying to get that work done, meddling through. The goal is to have a draft of the audit report done before September seventh and then present, I'm sorry, October seventh, and then present to the Audit Committee October seventh before the board meeting. They are due to state ed by October fifteenth, so we want to try to keep that goal in mind. Our internal audit, I'm waiting for a draft report of that. They are working on the school lunch program, and I reached out to Cooper Areas, and they told me they would have that for me this week, so I should have that when I get that as well, and we'll schedule a meeting for that committee once I get that. Our financial reports tonight are for the end of the year. They are un-audited. I just want to remind you that there could be changes to these after the audit is complete, when they give us any potential journal entries. We have expenditures for the month of June that were sixteen point five million. This is much higher than our typical months during the year, and that's because we do have our ten-month employees that have the option to get paid in a lump sum at the end of the year. They can have a twenty-two pays or twenty-six pays, is what it's called, so that leaves our expenditures higher in the month of June for that payroll. Our revenues received, our excess cost aid came in at four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, Bosse's aid, five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, and our interest earned was a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. One of the items I forgot to add, as I was going through it tonight, we did get our FEMA money in, and that was four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We were waiting for that at least a year or possibly longer, so that was a great receipt to get in June. So our total expenses through the end of June of twenty twenty four totaled eighty-five point nine million dollars. This is ninety-six percent of the budget being spent, and in comparison with prior years, it would be the same as twenty-two, twenty-three. We earned ninety point seven million dollars in revenue through the end of the year, and this is at one hundred and two percent, so we actually earned more revenue than anticipated. And I can tell you that is based upon our interest earnings. The lump, looking at a higher level without going into detail, was our interest earnings and the FEMA money, which were not budgeted for, for the most part. That makes up the majority of the additional revenue. But again, it's similar to the prior year, twenty-two, twenty-three. And that's all I have for this evening. Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, Instruction, Personnel, and Technology Report, Mr. Jason Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus. Good evening, everyone. So I had a great opportunity on Friday, August second, to attend the Mid Hudson School Study Council Annual Law Updates, held at Mount St. Mary College, so I'll just pass this around if you care to take a look. This is always a great session that's offered. It's usually well-attended. This year, we had five unique sessions, with the last being the usual and customary update of many, many laws, regulations, and so on. What I'll try to do here for you is give you a general and rather brief update, so that's not to repeat everything. I found the first session regarding artificial intelligence and legal concerns to be very interesting, because, as you know, the use of artificial intelligence by students, teachers, and employers in general is certainly on the rise. This particular session focused on potential issues with the use of AI, especially confidentiality issues, privacy concerns, data security, and it led into some title issues and potentials there. So regarding employment law and AI, discrimination is a large concern right now, because many are using AI to go through the hiring process. And so that may be through an initial screening process, it may be even through recognition of speech patterns, facial expressions during an interview process. Doesn't necessarily mean that we're looking to do that, however, it seems that that is on the rise. And that may lead to some bias in the hiring process, which then may lead to discrimination. So that was something that was brought up and discussed. We also talked about potential law being brought into New York State, which will mimic New York City labor law, which then states that essentially if we're going to use any programs, it must be subject to an audit yearly to ensure that there isn't bias. Also leads into FERPA and use of personal identifiable information, which comes into play mostly with students, education law two D. So there's a large amount of relevance there, because someone may choose to use AI, ChatGPT, for instance, for evaluation purposes, or the creation of student goals and RPs and five oh fours, and that may then lead to the use of PII, professional identifiable information. And that's a big issue for us, so we have to protect that. Again, we're fully compliant with N Law two D, so turn it in, and the use of turning in for plagiarism and catching that, everything's purchased through Bosse's, and everything's properly vetted, so we're covered there. There was also tips that we'll provide, which if you have the booklet in the back, there's a single sheet, and I think that's something that we can bring forward to our administrators and our teams to make sure that this is in place as we move on. As you move into the second session, this is something that will be new for us, in that it is the APPR changes, which goes from thirty-twelve D to thirty-twelve E, which will now become a part of the collective bargaining agreement with our teachers, and actually housed in the CBA and enforced through the CBA. So this is something that we have to seek some more information on and get ready to go through that negotiation process, but it is a rather large overhaul in that evaluations will no longer be attached to student performance measures. So everything is based on multiple measures, however, the focus will be on teacher observations and principal observations. No longer using headbands and a matrix to decide, highly effective or developing, et cetera. Everything will pretty much become static with a one through four, based on observation within the standard. And again, this will be enforced through the CBA. And so, you know, there's potential for this to have impact on teacher discipline. If you are in a situation where you may find thirty-twenty is necessary, at this point, it appears that landmark decisions will be the eye test, if you will, when you talk about maybe cases of incompetence and so on. So no longer is there that air quote expedited process of, for instance, two ineffectives in a row. Now it moves more into relevant landmark cases being a large part of that decision. And as we move into sessions three and four, certainly don't want to gloss over those. Session three and four really talked about First Amendment rights, Title IX, DASSA, proper implementation, investigations, and changes to regulations, which I know we've been staying on top of at the district level. And of course, as always, you know, we've got work to do to stay up with those changes. Regarding the First Amendment rights of students and employees, the main concern is within Title VI and discrimination based on race and color and national origin. When you move down to the fourth session, where we spoke about Title IX and DASSA, of course, you talk about human rights laws in New York State. Of course, DASSA prevents bullying of students by other students and adults, and Title IX is Title IX. And there's a large focus there on the updates to the regulations and the investigations, especially on Title IX for the student side, which once focused on events that occurred in the school or at a school event, and now it's becoming anything relevant where the school district has an obligation to monitor disciplinary action. And so we'll continue to seek out updates from our legal team and share those with our administrative team. Of course, our teachers, and most certainly the Board of Education. It's also a large focus on support measures and offering those as quickly as possible to students to help them to return to programs if it's deemed that they've been prevented to access those. That was really stressed. And of course, you're already aware mostly of the proposed changes to athletics. There was a large portion of that session dedicated to that, and I know Mr. St. Lawrence is just staying abreast of those changes, and will continue to update us. The last session was awesome. It was with Jay Verona. I couldn't possibly summarize all the information that he presented. It's over seventy pages in the booklet. He sticks to the book very well, however, he adds in a lot of personal narrative, a lot of relevant experience, a lot of scenarios, if you will, so I couldn't necessarily give you that summary. However, it's all about the most recent changes in regulations, the most recent cases that have been decided, again, focusing on those landmark decisions that may have impact in districts across the state. Had the opportunity to be joined by many of our administrators here in districts, so I'd like to thank them for their time. I think it's great that they had that experience as well, and we look forward to attending that next year. So all in all, a great experience, and I thank the Board and our administrative team, the central office, for sending me as well. And that will conclude my report this evening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carter. Moving on now, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Billy and Shannon. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education accepts the retirement of Brooke Knapp, teacher age effective August twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Knapp has been with the district for nineteen years. Being further resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the arrangement of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and good luck, Ms. Knapp, and all your future endeavors. There's no old business, so moving on to new business. We need a motion to approve amendments of John Scott. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the amendments of the July first, twenty twenty-four Annual Reorganizational Meeting and Regularity. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion to accept recommendations of the Committee of Special Education and Committee on Preschool Special Education, Billy and Shannon. Be resolved, the Board of Education hereby arranges for the special education programs and services based upon the recommendations made for preschool and school-age students with disabilities by the Committee on Preschool Special Education, CPSA, and Committee on Special Education, CSE, during the period ending April fourth, twenty twenty-four, through and including July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, and directs the district to arrange for the provisions of said special education program and services to such preschool and school-age students with disabilities as recommended during such time period by the CPSA and CSE. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion to approve the agreement for special education services, Mount Pleasant Products, UFSD, Ashley and Scott. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education enters into an agreement with Mount Pleasant College, UFSD, to provide special education services to Goshen Central School District students effective July first, twenty twenty-four to July thirty, twenty twenty-five, at tuition rates set by the State Education Department. Be further resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute the agreements. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We need a motion to approve the settlement agreement, Tax Sursuaryary Chester LeBaron, John and Ashley. Resolve that the Board of Education, the Goshen Central School District, approves the terms of the settlement agreement in form attached in Article VII proceedings commenced by Chester LeBaron against the town of Goshen in the Orange County Supreme Court, which is doctored under the index numbers as presented. Be it also resolved that the Board be authorized to transfer the total sum thirty-two thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and eighty cents from its Tax Sursuaryary Reserve Fund to be used to pay school library tax refunds for the twenty twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four school years, and be further authorized to refund any excess school library taxes levied and collected during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, based on the differences between the final twenty-four assessment and the corrected assessments as set forth in the attached settlement agreement. And be it further resolved that the Board's attorneys be authorized to execute any and all documents in furtherance of this resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We need a motion to approve the agreements for appraisal services. Billy and Shannon. Be resolved upon the recommendations of the superintendent of school, the Board of Education approves entering into agreements with certified appraisal services to provide property appraisal services effective July first, twenty twenty-four, as presented. Be it further resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of school to execute the agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We need a motion to approve the agreement between the district and employee number zero eight zero five two four. Ashley and Scott. Be resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the provisions of an agreement between the Goshen Central School District and employee number zero eight zero five two four as presented. Be it further resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute the agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We need a motion to approve a budgetary transfer. Right, with Ashley and John. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the following budgetary transfers in aggregate over one thousand, one hundred and five thousand dollars. Ashley, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We need a motion to approve lease agreements between the Goshen Central School District and OU Bosse's. Scott and Shannon. Be resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the president to execute a lease agreement between OU Bosse's and the Goshen Central School District for office space at CJ Oakham Middle School to house the Bosse's Interscholastic Athletic Coordinator in the amount of nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We need a motion to approve intermunicipal agreement with Middletown City School District Transportation, John and Scott. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the intermunicipal agreement between the Goshen Central School District and the Middletown City School District, which allows for Goshen Central School District to provide transportation of Middletown City School District students under the provisions of McKinney-Vento Act, effective July seventeen, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Be it further resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the board president to execute said intermunicipal agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We need a motion to approve assignment, assumption, and consent agreement for Glen Arden Inc. and the Knowles of Goshen Inc. John and Billy. Be resolved that the Board hereby authorizes the superintendent of schools to execute an assignment, assumption, and consent agreement on behalf of the district as presented with the Board at this meeting, for the Knowles at Goshen Inc. signing to assume certain obligations of Glen Arden Inc. signor related to a payment-in-limbed tax agreement dated November fifteenth, nineteen ninety-four, between Glen Arden Inc. and the municipal taxing authorities, including the district. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We need a motion to approve entry of names of the 2024 graduates in the Board of Education Minutes. Billy and Shannon? Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the entry of the names of the 2024 graduates in the Board of Education Minutes. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. No additional criticism, void, silence? All right, very good. All right, now moving on. Any board member issues, comments, concerns, thoughts?
So at graduation, we heard several speeches, which were all fantastic. One of the speeches that stood out to me a little bit was a student who was compelled to discuss their experience in their youth hockey career because they weren't given other opportunities. So while it was a touching speech, it did allow me to kind of reflect a little bit and just think about student opportunities, which we've talked about over and over again. I'm glad to see that's listed on the goal sheet that Dr. Curtis shared out. And I can't help but think that, wondering if there's other opportunities for some of these kids that might be outside of Goshen. We talk about agreements with other districts. I know other districts partner up and have joint teams. So knowing that Lutrow Woodbury has a new superintendent, you know, might be worth it to reach out and with Mr. St. Lawrence's connections in Lutrow Woodbury, possibly see if some of our students who play hockey here could reach out and maybe we could have a joint partnership. I know a lot of districts will, they set it up as a basically a per player rate. I know it's done a lot in Westchester, it's done a lot in Rockland County, it's done across the board, across the border, between Rockland County Schools and Orange County Schools. So knowing this, it's obvious that, you know, you can't have a, Goshen doesn't have enough players for that team. And there are probably other sports out there which might have great opportunities for kids. And it really just kind of moves back to, you know, we've talked about it over the years, we now have it, you know, kind of listed here as a goal, and I think this is the perfect time to kind of look at it. I know those kids typically play on the Washingtonville Club Team, but the club team is slightly different from a, a school team, a section team, you know, where they get to play for a section championship. So everybody just wanted to kind of share that, put that out there, and see if we could possibly start having those conversations with some of those other districts.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, and I remember the last time we talked about it, I believe, you know, St. Lawrence kind of pooled interest, did a little, you know, digging to see what we might be able to do, ran some numbers. I also feel like that it's writing on paper, you know, kind of going into our board goals. I think that's great, so we could always have this document to refer back to. And I also think it might give us that, you know, opportunity to think, all right, good example, there's this other team, maybe we could joint venture. What else might there be in the arts, in music, in other avenues? And, you know, maybe we could start pooling a little bit, seeing what else is out there, but kind of gives us a nice action item here, so I think that's a good idea.
And as you're speaking, I'm also thinking about some of the items that Mr. St. Lawrence spoke about with the direction that the state might be moving with sports. This might be a good opportunity to open up, you know, I know he used volleyball, for example, while we don't have boys volleyball teams in Orange County, I know other counties do have that. If that's the route that the state moves, maybe this is a way to cataract it and kind of keep all of, you know, all of our players feeling comfortable with the sports that they're playing and given opportunities where they don't feel they have to play on either girls team or boys team.
Yeah, great. All right, other comments, thoughts? Any general feedback on the draft of our goals and objectives, how it's laid out? So I'd like to say thank you. I do like something on paper and spreadsheet form, I think it's a good first step, so I like this. I like it, something where if there's a people conference, we can all add something, I think that's great. I kind of like to bounce off Billy's idea, you know, Billy kind of focused on hockey. But I think that's great, but I think we also should have some sort of plan in place that we're going to pull students to see what, whether it's sports or arts or clubs or anything else that we can bounce off of other schools. I don't know if there's a plan in place or how we'll pull them, but I think that should be kind of something, sometime early in the year, just to plan ahead. And I know we were talking before even about, you know, what we're going to do in team that goes through. But just anything, I just don't want to give anyone the excuse.
I also think it's great that you, Dr. Coats, are starting the process. I think we have it here, and we've spoken about it. I think the bigger question is how do we hold ourselves accountable, to be able to hold ourselves accountable, to be sure that we are working towards meeting these goals? Because these are all important goals, they're all things that be listed, and I don't think that anyone feels any different. These are extremely important issues to those of us on the board, those of us who are here and who are C holders who have committee. So I think it's also really important that we put a plan in place, how we can start meeting these goals sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent with everything I'm saying here, and having an outline or a timeline, it kind of ties into that big day agenda phrase, right? So once we lock this in, laying it out. Some of the comments I wrote down here in terms of like this format of this spreadsheet, I don't know where it fits in exactly, but I wrote down, you know, date initiated, date followed up, all in accord. So it's kind of like a tracking for us as well. So we do have these, I hate the expression, high level, if we have these high level goals for taking anything random here, the code of conduct building level, kind of setting those goals now, forecasting it out, whether it's first quarter, second quarter, whatever that meeting, that's a great way to keep this as a tracking as well. Sorry, that's a direct, just follow on Ash's point. I do think that once a quarter, at least, we should be talking about this. It's getting us to say we have a better traction, we have a better, I think, it's, you know, it's kind of self pleasing for us to sit here in front of a public and say, hey, where are we at with these goals? And listen, sometimes there's a lot of, there's a lot of resistance to change, and things are hard to move, but I think that everybody, us and the public, would have to feel that it's a present, our mind is part of what we do.
And just kind of going off of what John's talking about, we kind of trust the idea around, about a year ago, maybe a little longer, I think you know where I'm going with this, with the workshops. And I want to steal your thunder, is that something you want to?
I have my list of all the things that were said, it's right there, we're on the same page.
Perfect, Johnstone, exactly. But so, so I guess the question that I'm almost thinking, because John had mentioned like quarterly, I don't know the, you know, the legality of this, but, you know, can we have just put on one meeting every quarter is now official workshop? And we know that, and then we do it that way where it's, hey, all right, you know, second meeting in November, that's the workshop. Second meeting in February, that's a workshop. And the public knows that, we know that, we understand the format because they get something a little bit different.
I think it's a, I think it's a great idea, and we floated it around last year about the workshop style, and thought about it, being that there is, you know, a large number of goals to try to track that, maybe that is part of the item where if the meeting before is full of resolutions, maybe we reserve some of that, this, you know, core discussion becomes core discussion slash workshop, where we get into the maybe gritty a little bit, and it's necessary, you know, have people from subcommittees, whether it be a business or curriculum, have them at the ready as well. You know, I went over all of our lists here, because I was laughing at you saying that, keeping track of this. The one thing that I've been thinking about since the last time we put together this list, which I think is great and ambitious, all the things we'd like to see done, the one difference that brings up to me, and just take it really great, it's all I've got to say, is last year I feel like there were some goals that we had that helped us improve as a governance team. So we did our training, but we happened to have the same team again, right? The training was good, the roles and responsibilities of the superintendent, governance team, the assistant superintendent, how it all marries together, we put together the governance handbook. I think that's a good self improvement goal. And I think these are all great district goals, but I ask myself this question, what is a goal that we can set to improve as a board? Is there a self improvement goal that we can look at that could help us make another step forward, right? Like a lot of this stuff, I think this whole board, I would take any of those off the list. And just again, food for thought, it's something I've been thinking about since the last meeting a little bit, you know.
I would say just to your point, capabilities as well. We've been talking about the workshop idea for a good amount of time, so I think for me as a board member, I'm sure you guys won't be the same way, we want to be transparent, we want to be accountable, we want to make headway on these objectives. So to me, I think a great board goal would be to actually get the workshop portion up and running so that these other things can really start feeling like we're tackling, getting some specific headway on these areas.
So I was really going to say something very similar to Shannon, but I just thought that to your point that we should always be making efforts, self improvement, I do feel like transparency is the goals, and the workshop meetings are self improvement, and I do think that makes us a better, more well-rounded board. And I can't ever remember the name of the folks who did our training, they were great. Maybe we can reach out to them and see, maybe they have another type of training or any format besides that initial, you know, relationships between the board and superintendent role, maybe they have something else that's...
Maybe specific to that.
Right.
You know, we did do a lot of that work, I think we're all a good age, but that's something that, you know, it would be helpful to have more guidance, maybe even from our legal team too, which is about certain things, how to handle it, but again, with a workshop, it's something like I said, people's talked about, and really be more transparent and more accountable and really focus on specific things.
I like it. Any other closer comments on our goals and objectives, I really do appreciate getting that out, the expression, I think it's really great stuff here.
I have to, yeah. Kevin, Susan, thank you, Josh, I'll do it. Just one thing, the shift to the workshop model just requires some planning from an operational backend, we just get business items set. Everyone's accustomed to having two business meetings per month, so either adding to say, okay, the first ten minutes is going to be business items, or if we say like the second half of the year, we'll go to the workshop model so that Maureen and I can tell all the buildings, the departments ahead, if you're cut off, you've got one meeting a month, this is your chance, you got to get it rolled in, so we just need to think about the timing, roll that out. If you want to schedule a little ahead of time, make a moment of advance, it's fine, we just need to get the mindset shifts to the departments and the buildings.
I think that makes a lot of sense, just looking at the timing here, we're at seven fifteen, we didn't have any privilege on the fourth night, we didn't have too many reports from Ops, Product, President's Report, Stephen Brad, so there are a few items that I think we can add another chunk of time, but if we try to keep the meeting within, you know, the two hour maximum mark, we want to pass, you know, tonight we had a good amount of items, right, eleven action items, so even if we kept it at ten action items, that still like, what is, I'd bracket to say workshop enough, and how long of a workshop you want to have, right, to twenty minute target, so we just try it, see how that aligns time works.
It doesn't have to be one workshop a month, or could we do one workshop every three months, or, I guess that's a question, I don't know.
I would kind of think that maybe, you know...
No, because I really don't think we're going to know until we start to feel it helping. I think the idea is if we're able to do it once, sorry, if we're able to do it once a quarter, that's great, if we need more of them, we can build on it, but we're starting at zero, so any percentage improvement is improvement, so I think... Again, even if it's only by phone to connect with other boards, I'd already do this, just to have a conversation, tell us what you do, what does it look like, what does it feel like, just to get some feedback.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, you know, I was going to jump in and add that, we might find that the workshop or an extended discussion, if you will, might be a little bit more necessary early on, especially if you just tackle any one of these sections of, you know, funding, multisensory learning programs, all right, and then some of the action items here. We could jump into all that, that's easy, a twenty minute conversation right there, kind of talk through it, figure out some action items, what makes sense. So I think, you know, any one of those things could right away be a discussion slash workshop.
It might be helpful for everyone who is here and everyone who might be listening to understand what we mean by a workshop in our model about where we're at meeting, and I don't know that everybody would understand what we are actually talking about.
Good point. Workshop, and jumping, if I'm not describing correctly, would more so be just a working session where we dig into some of the details on some of these ideas, our goals, our objectives, or if we had, you know, a certain type of committee conversation that needed to happen, or to bring someone else in within the district, like our, you know, Director of Athletics to talk about some of these items, that would happen here at this open table, kind of like roundtable discussion for us, not necessarily for public input, but just for that matter.
They're intended to be very public facing, they're intended to be, as Mr. Johnson shared, very transparent so that everyone's aware of what the board is talking about, but it's intended so that you can openly communicate with one another on what's presented to you. It almost always starts with someone having given a topical presentation on whatever the subject may be, so if it's student opportunities, you may have, you know, your two secondary principals and your director of athletics to talk about what they already have on the books. If it's a facilities plan, you may have your director of facilities give an update on a specific area of development of facilities, and then it targets something that the board wants to discuss. It almost always does not end in any action items by the board. Now, I don't want people to think, okay, we're going to talk about it, and then we're going to pass six resolutions on what we talked about. It usually develops funding and action items that come as a result of that, but it really gives a good groundwork of making progress on certain items that you're working towards.
And a good example of that might be something like the long term planning you just brought up, buildings and drafts, right? So we have these, we have these meetings with the safety and buildings, that's three of us in specific, but in the five year planning, you know, and drafting that together, there's this idea of more of a long term plan, you know, what are those ideas? And that could be that opportunity to hear from the rest of the board members about some of those items. Not that those decisions are being made in the subcommittees, but then it's an idea to, you know, it's a platform to discuss more of that. Agreed? All right, anything else here? No? Good. All right, any other board member comments, issues, concerns, thoughts? Okay, great, and then with that, I just need a motion to close the meeting. John and Ashley? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you very much, everyone.